Yes, I'm on.
Anybody else?
Diane is here.
Okay. We're gonna fire it up to me and then we'll get started. Okay, welcome back, everybody. Today is the afternoon session of December 21st. Our first agenda item is an action item. This is actually a continuation of a public hearing for CA 20-3. And on the phone, we have Michelle and Diane. Is there anyone else on the phone? Those two?
Uh, this is Morgan.
Morgan, you're on there too?
Yeah.
Okay, so... At this time, I'm gonna turn it over to whoever wants to speak from the City McCall.
Okay, um, this is Michelle Brennival, Community and Economic Development Director. Um, as mentioned, this is, um, a number of code amendments that were continued from a previous meeting. Um, we have hired Diane Kushner to help us with our code amendments to get them in line, aligned with our comprehensive plan and to make some revisions for streamlining, um, and simplification. So I, at this point, will turn it over to her and, um, Morgan B. Sauer, City Planner, is also on the phone. And we can answer any questions we may have.
Thanks.
So, thanks, thank you, Commissioners, good afternoon. Do you have the presentation up before you on the screen that we sent on Friday?
I don't have it, and I'm still looking for it, so...
I have it.
Okay.
Is that in the outlet?
Do you want me to put it up there really quick?
That'd be great.
If you... Hang on a sec, we're gonna try and get it up on our big screen. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
We just lost it on the screen. There it goes. Okay, go ahead, Diane.
Okay, good. If you go to slide two, um, I, we showed you this little timeline at the last meeting on December 7th, where we've been with these code amendments. And, uh, as you know, you continue the hearing from December 7th. On last Thursday, the 17th, the McCall City Council had a public hearing. And they have continued that hearing until, uh, January 14th. So we're here today on the 21st, and I'll, I'll explain, and Michelle and Sheri, we can help, um, go through what some of the issues were with the City Council. Um, they actually only had four members present, so they were a little bit deadlocked on one of the issues. I've got a summary of each of these sections of the code, and I have that summary at the end of the presentation, and I didn't intend to go through it unless you want to go to a specific section, we can do that. Um, but there were some changes. Uh, Michelle and Morgan had a couple of conversations with some of the design professionals in the community. And they brought up a couple of issues that really have resulted in some changes. And so I wanted to make sure you are aware of those changes. So if you go to the next slide, um, it shows you...
Slide three, Diane.
Slide three?
Okay.
Slide three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Got it?
Aren't we smart to have numbered these?
Yeah.
Um, uh, so slide three is the summary of the first section of changes, which is definition changes. And, uh, we added some new terms, we revised some terms. Um, and so if you go to, and so this is the, this is the first area where there's some change from what you saw before. So if you go to the next slide, um, there was a, uh, an added definition for side-loaded garage. And the intent was that it does not fit the primary street, so we're changing "any" to "the street." But the more significant change occurs in the building height definition. And we had changed that definition to include the height based on the existing grade prior to construction or finished floor ele, or modified grade elevation after construction. Uh, we now are suggesting that the existing grade prior to construction or finished floor elevation after construction, whichever is more restrictive. Now, this is where I'm gonna take a pass to Michelle, and she'll, she, there's a few diagrams that follow in this presentation that describe where we've been with the existing, uh, with the definition of building height and how that will change graphically. So I'll hand that to Michelle, and if you move ahead to the next slide.
Okay, so, um, if you can see the slide that said old, says old code. Um, the purpose of this is just to kinda tell you how we've gotten to where we are today in terms of the suggestion for changing building code. So prior to 2006, um, the way that the building height definition read was that you would take, um, the highest point of the building, draw a line across, and then you would take the lowest point of the building, and that, that, um, area between the, the high and low point could not exceed 35 feet. And what we found was that, um, for slopes that were pretty steep, especially some of the kind of the lakefront homes, um, it, it became kind of very challenging to design in those sites because you could have 35 feet on the lakeside, for example, but maybe you could only have a one-story with a flat roof garage. And so, so, um, I don't know the exact year, but I think it was around 2008 or so, the design community came back and said, "What if we actually changed the building definition so that the buildings could stop with the slope?" So you, it would be 35 feet at any vertical point. Um, so that was adopted by both the city and the county and has been in play. And for many years, it, that worked or seemed to work just fine. Um, but in the more recent past, what we've been finding and what the Planning and zoning commission have struggled with is people are essentially digging down. Um, so they're digging down for daylight basement. And so we have had applications, um, where we have residential structures that, um, are basically anywhere between like 45 to 50 feet. Um, and that really wasn't the intent. And so that brings us to the new suggestion.
Michelle? Yeah? You might wanna move to six, slide six, so they can see that.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, thanks. Um, so slide six shows, um, basically the existing definition of building code. Um, and because it, it, it talks about existing grade, um, it doesn't account for those daylight basements. So if we go to the next slide, um, what we're proposing now is, is basically a modification. Um, so it allows people to do, to design with slopes, but it, it basically still any endpoint, um, vertical point that's 35 feet. So you're not able to essentially gain an extra floor. Um, so I think it's within the intent of the 35-foot height limit, um, but it's not necessarily, um, going beyond that. And so, you know, we talked with the design community, and they felt really comfortable with this new definition. And therefore, that, that is why that definition has been changed. Are there any questions about that?
Yeah, Michelle, on the proposed code, the picture I'm looking at, the upper structure then could go deeper than below grade and still come up, up to the red line to keep the 35 feet. So you could actually have a building that could be 50 feet, but 15 of it is underneath the existing grade. Is that correct?
No, it's, it's 35 feet at any given point. Um, you could still have the building stepping up, but it's that finished floor grade, so you would measure from that, that finished floor up 35 feet. So you might have, you know, a portion of the structure, um, below the surface, but you won't necessarily have, um, you'll only have 35 feet in total. So some of it could be submerged if they decide to build into the hillside, but you won't have 35 feet from existing grade, if that makes sense.
It makes sense. So my next question then would be, when these people dig into the hillside to put in a place like this, is there, you know, uh, I don't know what to say, some kind of of code that doesn't make sure that sediment doesn't get into the lake and doesn't wash into the nearest creek or doesn't wash down the road or anything like that? I mean, that's all protected?
Yeah, so, um, anywhere in the shoreline area, we do require, um, BMPs, and that's part of the engineering review too. So, yeah, we do have those provisions already in place.
Michelle?
This is Sheri. Do you find that this is really, um, geared just to mitigate issues at the lake? Are you finding that these are issues in other areas? And I guess, I, it gets to my main question, is we're only looking at the impact area as far as how it impacts the county. Can you tell me, does this really impact the county within the impact areas? Or are you really just trying to mitigate lakeshore issues?
I'm sorry, Sheri, you were a little bit muffled. I mean, actually, could you repeat your question? I couldn't totally hear you.
Sorry, we're having issues with microphones. So...
Okay, that sounds better.
So are you guys just trying to mitigate issues around the lake with this? We, we only look at, you know, really what's in the impact area. And I don't know that we have a lot of slopes in the impact area, other than maybe Whitetail, if they're in the impact.
Maybe Kings, Kings Park.
Kings Park. Uh, so is, can you tell me, is there an area of the county that this would really impact? Or is it really just for around the lake and mitigating issues there?
This basically really only impacts, um, properties that have steep slopes. So there's a few areas in town, um, in the city limits, it would probably be more of like Aspen Ridge, um, Aspen Ridge Two, um, in the county, there are some pretty steep slopes on East Side Drive. Um, and so some of that's in the city, some of it's in the county, most of it's in the county. Um, King, Kings Park is another example where we have some lots that are pretty steep. Um, so that's where we see these kinds of applications. To be honest, it's, you need to have a pretty steep slope, you know, to be able to get those kinds of heights. But I don't think that was like ever really the intent. Um, so it's something that we're just trying to correct for. But, yeah, so I would say those are the areas of town that are, would be probably most impacted. And like I said, it's probably the, kind of the most, um, extreme slopes in those areas.
So I don't think it really impacts the county that much.
Yeah, I would say primarily it would probably be the East Side Drive area. Um, and, you know, it, it's kind of another point that's gonna come up a little later. We were meeting with the fire district this morning. Um, and it can just be a challenge when you have those very steep slopes and really steep driveways. Um, and so, so those are probably the areas in the impact area that are most impacted by this.
Okay, thank you.
Move on.
Yeah, I was gonna turn it over to you, Diane.
Move on to slide eight, then. This reflects the, the changes that are made to the scenic route overlay zone. And there were a couple of corrections and issues that came up, um, in this area. And if you go to the next slide, we'll show you what those are. Uh, first of all, was a change to what lands are, um, the zone applies to. And we had written in a way that anything you could see from the route would be subject to it. So the intent is it has to be visible and, uh, within 150 feet. So we changed the "or" to "and." The other issue is the prohibition on service stations. And I think we briefly talked about it at the last meeting, but this is the area where the council found itself deadlocked. Um, there was a lot of discussion about an absolute prohibition or prohibition within certain areas of the overlay. And, uh, the commissioners of the council just could not come to a, um, decision on this, this one point. So this is the primary reason why they've continued their public hearing until January. And they've asked staff and the city attorneys to look at some alternatives to an absolute prohibition on service station, um, use. So unless there's any questions on that, I'll move to the next slide.
So I do have some questions on that. Um, this is one of the areas that I have concerns also. So first of all, Cron Lane and Highway 55, has that already been approved for that service station that's going in there?
No, I have not.
So this would impact that also, if this is gonna be put in place?
That, that permit is grandfathered, so that particular permit would move forward under the current code.
Uh, wait, just a clarification, Morgan, that with the Cron Lane and Highway 55 proposal hadn't submitted in a recent application, correct?
They submitted a formal land use application, but it has been over a year. And so they were, they sort of tabled their application about a year ago to do more research. And I haven't heard from them in, gosh, I don't know, six to nine, probably nine months. So it's not my understanding that that is an active application. Um, if they had kept it active and tried to move it forward in that one-year period, it would have been grandfathered. But because it's been over a year and they have let it drop, if this passed and they reapplied, um, it was not gonna allow you, you're correct.
So Morgan, this is up, was there, did there used to be a gas station there?
No.
So how did they get grandfathered?
So what Diane meant was if your application is subject to whatever code you submitted under.
Oh, I see.
And they submitted under the existing code. And so...
Okay.
If they had adopted this code...
Right.
And their application was, um, current, they would still be allowed because you're, you're held to the code you submitted under.
Right.
So that's what you meant by grandfather.
That's where I lost. I'm not as smart as some folks, so it takes me a while to get through with that. I don't understand.
So I guess...
We're throwing a lot at you.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Right, feel free to let Morgan speak up.
Yeah, I was okay. Add one more thing about that service station. So the intent behind this was, was essentially that. It was a prohibition to not allow service stations along the scenic route, which is our existing highway, um, and all the way kind of through town and Third Street and East Lake Street. And so, so that was being proposed, it was intentional. The idea was to, um, de-list the Boystin-Dinehard Road as a scenic route. And so therefore, the idea is to, to direct any future service stations, so new, new applications to that area, um, with the idea that the city is talking with the state and, and working on, you know, that highway slot. So, so that was an intentional thing to not necessarily have gas stations at the gateway of the community. Um, and I think what the city council struggled with, it was kind of a two-two split. Some people felt as though, well, we wanna direct service stations to the outskirts of town. Um, and those places make sense. And then there was other people who kind of were saying, "Well, no, like, we don't really want that service station as kind of the first thing you see." So my recommendation to the county is because the city council hasn't, um, you know, hasn't made a decision on this, is that if, for some reason, today you're ready to make a decision, it's just to go ahead and pull out, um, the service station component of, you know, of these code amendments. And then they have done the city council discussion, and, and what you come up with today, we can come back with, um, revised language or, or whatever you decide to do. But I think, um, it's probably just at this point easier just to pull that, that out of the ordinance.
And I'll tell you what my concerns are, and then, um, you know, 'cause I, I would be willing to pull that out, but... So with the denial of the Elo Road in 55, that's, you know, there, there's some future planning, I think, to be done. I understand the conversation about not wanting a service station on your entryway. But if the intent is to pull those service stations out of the downtown core, which I concur with, I think that, you know, the, the Maverick Hill is an interesting conversation. But I think you have to have them along your main corridor somewhere. So now you're driving the service stations, which really are high use and should be on city services into the county. So that's just kind of my thought process behind the whole thing, is if you're gonna deny them, clear out to the impact area, then they're gonna be looking outside of that and onto septic, which I don't like seeing. So that's my, my conversation behind that.
Okay, thank you. That, yeah, that's helpful, 'cause we will be developing some alternatives proposals for the city council. So great to hear what, what the county commissioners, what you all think.
I don't know, I guess my feeling is, I look at what's there now at Elo Road. Do you want a gas station or do you want a storage facility? To me, they're both, you know, the storage facility certainly isn't as impactful as far as city services and sewer and water stuff, but visually, I think I would rather have a really nice updated gas station, service station, than another storage unit coming in as your entrance into town.
I would agree with that.
I don't know, I, you know, you, what about a tire station? It's not a service station, can you put in a Les Schwab or a, or something like that in your entrance to town? I, to me, it's almost like you need an area for that kind of activity somewhere along the route. And that's where you stick everybody's in that area, but that's not how it works, I know.
Well, and I think it's architectural control as much as it's, you know, use along that scenic bypass, 'cause I'm really protective of the scenic bypass, but I think there's architectural details that you can add that help. That's just my input.
So are you, any more discussion? You ready to move on?
No, let's move on.
So the next slide, on slide 10, enters into the chapter eight, the general development standards, and there's a whole series of those, uh, some of which relate to driveway design. And so if you move to slide 11, there is an addition, um, that we had overlooked, which is, uh, current practice by the city to, uh, require just one driveway access per parcel or lot, um, unless there's some special circumstances. And this is really an area where we interface with public work because, um, they have a responsibility for snow plowing and maintaining the driveway. And so multiple driveway access is really problematic for them. So they asked us, this is the current practice, that that should be added to our design requirements for driveways.
I have a question for driveways. So I looked a little deeper in the ordinance, and it says that it's gotta be a minimum of 12 feet and maximum of 20. But isn't it that you can't have a culvert larger than 16 feet? Or has that changed? I couldn't find that.
Um, what was it, the culvert?
So, in, in the new ordinance, it states that, um, it's a minimum of 12 feet width and maximum of 20-foot width. But I think that the culvert, uh, had been called out, it was like 16 feet is the longest. So in the county, there's a lot of people that want wider driveways. What is the width of the culvert if you're gonna allow a 20-foot wide driveway access? Is that a 24-foot culvert?
Most culverts come in 20-foot lengths. When you buy them new, they're in 20-foot lengths.
I don't think you can put a 20-foot wide driveway on a 20-foot culvert, though. You gotta have an extension of that culvert length.
Yep. But I can't...
Yeah, I don't know the answer.
Oops, sorry, go ahead.
I'm, I'm just saying that's out of my, um, technology. I don't know the answer to that question.
So, um, I'll add something, and I think Morgan might also have more to add. But, um, essentially in the city limits, we do driveway permits. And so, um, that's part of the review process, is evaluating, making sure that there is proper drainage and culvert. So the size of the culvert would be based on the width of the driveway. And we put maximum, um, specifically for snow plowing. Um, and so like we just don't have, you know, it's, it's kind of an asset control thing as well because we wanna evaluate the distance, you know, of the driveway as it relates to an intersection for safety concerns and things like that. Um, and so I think, I don't know that the county actually issues driveway permits. Um, but Morgan, you probably know more about this than I do.
They do issue driveway permits. Um, so I'm looking at that section of the code, and I do wanna point out that it says "single family and in the central business district." So I think the 20 feet is specifically to limit those central business district, um, width. And so not everything that's residential or not everything in these two zones is gonna be on a culvert, right? Some might be on a culvert, some might be on a curb bed or sidewalk. And so I think that it's gonna be a case-by-case basis, because like Michelle was saying, everything still comes through for a driveway permit. Um, but we just wanted to specify, no more than 20, because we oftentimes get applications right now for, um, driveways that are 20, 30, 40 feet wide, just totally unobstructed. And so we wanted to make it clear what our maximum was gonna be.
So in the impact area, Morgan, are you guys issuing those driveway permits or is the county?
The county is.
Okay, so we need to make sure...
If it's off the county road, but not off the state highway.
Right, so if it's off the state highway, the state would be issuing it. If it was on a county road in the impact area, the county issues them. Um, and we do look for those. At this time, the county doesn't necessarily, well, I think that they had issued residential driveway width up to 30 feet wide. Um, and I think that we had one the other day where someone asked for 40, and the county said, "Oh, you know, okay, that's fine with us." So what we wanna do is make sure that this is in our code, so everyone in our jurisdiction is adhering to the same rules. Um, and it's not, you know, the houses that we're approving in the city can only have 20, but the houses in the impact area can go up to 30 or 40. We just wanna make sure that, that it's consistent, because we do have two different bodies approving those driveway, um, permits.
You know, Michelle, my only thought on this is, to me, um, one of the things that you get with a 20-foot or a 40-foot driveway is you eliminate a lot of, uh, green on that lot. I mean, you're, it's a little bit harder as far as, uh, the aesthetics, as far as greenery and trees and grass and all that kind of stuff. If you limited it to 16 or 20-foot driveway, you're gonna get more green, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Well, that's what they're doing. So we need to make sure our road department isn't issuing something over 20 feet.
Well, the issue with that is, is big trucks. You know, some of the, you know, dump truck guys that, that pull truck, pup trailers, you drive over in that culvert, you flatten it, it's just not a wide enough driveway.
So what do we want in this ordinance? Because what this is gonna do is limit the county's, uh, issuance of these permits to 20 feet.
This is for residential. This is only for residential.
We have a lot of...
So we haven't even talked commercial or hotels or anything like that.
So a lot of those guys out on Sampson Lane are currently running this, you know, there's question is commercial versus residential. They're zone residential, they're using it for commercial in some instances.
I'm thinking of the guys across from the Lightport shop, most of those guys have, I'll bet they're 40-foot driveways.
Down, down the county, it wouldn't impact this ordinance at all?
No, but if they end up moving the impact zone further and further, there will be a missing that impact zone.
So something else I wanna point out is that the code specifically says that these are the minimums and maximums unless authorized, um, by the Public Works Director due to safety and traffic conditions. So if someone was coming in to get a conditional use permit to operate their contractor yard or something, and they needed more, they could do that. Or for any other, you know, needs, that they could make requests for special consideration. Um, it's not saying that there's no options for that, it's just saying that provided you're not getting special permission, this is our standard.
Yeah, I keep thinking of places like Lardo's or even the Shore Lodge that has two and three and four driveways.
Right, well, this is a residential, those properties.
Right, and those are coming in with their...
They're, they're community commercial.
Right.
This is simply like the downtown core and residential. And like I said, there's exceptions. So if anyone wants to apply, you know, because they are operating a commercial business or something like that, um, this allows for that flexibility.
And I think we should also just point out, um, that, you know, that a community commercial, which probably is most, um... I mean, the CBD is only within the city limits, but community commercial is within the impact zone. The standard is 30 feet, but you have, it's that same exception rule. So if, um, proven that, you know, trucks can't make turning radiuses and things like that, we can, um, approve a greater width. So I think there's those exempt clauses in, in both, in both. But just like Morgan said, it's really just applying to the residential within the impact zone.
I like it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, let's move on.
So, okay, so the last, the last is a very minor change where we forgot to delete the existing driveway width in the subdivision code. And so that's what you see on the following slide. And, uh, that is, that's the end of the changes that have occurred since the last time you saw the ordinance. And we've incorporated those in the current copy that was turned over to you. We also did advise the council about your concern about the 10,000 square foot. about the ten thousand square foot residential unit limitation, um, and I think they discussed that, and, and they were comfortable with that limitation. Um, so I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that. So the, the rest of the presentation is just what you saw before, a summary of each of the sections, and, um, if it's beneficial, we can turn to that if there's any particular questions. Thanks, a lot, and I'm happy to answer any questions now, too.
So going back to the ten thousand square feet, you guys are saying the city's okay with that?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think the discussion was really just about kind of the vision statement that, you know, if McCall's going to be a small town that's, um, sustainable and affordable, that that seems like a, an unreasonable size limit. Um, I think the other piece of it is that, uh, square footage isn't always correlated to value, so, um, so the idea is like, you know, in some other communities that do this, like, they might have a, a cap on homes, but the cost per square foot, like, is still, still high, right? So, at the end of the day, it's not necessarily about the size, but it's about the value, and that's what determines tax base. So, um, so I, I think that was the, the council's discussion, um, and I, like I said before, I think the goal will be, is that you set a cap, and at some point, we might come back, um, with a way to, um, exempt that, maybe through some kind of other, um, means. We just don't have that quite developed yet, and haven't been able to do that analysis, but kind of the first step, I thought, was to build the cap, and then maybe you can mitigate if people want to go larger, um, than those large homes that are having an impact on the community, can, can, you know, go through some sort of mitigation standard, that that's providing a local housing unit, or, um, exactly what that looks like yet, you know, that's kind of to be determined. But, so that's, and that's kind of the thought process behind it, was trying to be in line with kind of the vision of the community, um, also recognizing that, you know, we don't see a ton of homes, you know, in those size ranges, but, um, I won't be surprised if they become a little more common, and so the idea is bigger is not always better. It's also you can have a really high-quality, high-value home, um, and still hopefully, you know, get everything that you need within your home.
Michelle, this is Dave. I, I kind of was going down that same road, I was just curious if you guys had any idea about how many houses there are right now that are over ten thousand square feet in the impact area, or within the city limits? I looked, and I, I could only find a couple.
Yeah, we didn't, um, do that research, um, just because it's a little challenging for us. The Star News asked us that question, and we actually sent them to the sewer district, um, because they do their fee schedule based on square footage, so we thought they might actually have a better sense. I haven't heard back, Morgan, I don't know if you have. Um, I think it's probably, I, my guess is two to four, but I don't know, Morgan, if you have a better sense of that than I do.
Um, yeah, no, I haven't heard back from Drew. I can think of maybe two, like, one in the city, one in the impact that I've seen coming through this process, minor view in the last five years, but I know that there's more than that within Whitetail, um, but they don't come through planning and zoning for Whitetail, because they have their own review process. But I know that there's, there's several that have gone into Whitetail that I, that I haven't seen come across my desk, so, um-
Is Whitetail city limits, now, is that impact?
They're in the city limits.
Yeah, so I think it's probably fair to say less than a half a dozen, at this point. And like I said, I think that there, you know, there's an opportunity for both the city and the county to look at exempting that, you know, in the future with some kind of mitigation, and this was like our first attempt to sort of say, we're creating this very high cap that most homes aren't really coming anywhere near, but that if people do want to get that big with their home, um, understanding that these homes do have an impact on cost of living, um, amount of workforce that's associated with each of these homes is, um, it, they have their own little economies that come with them, and so they just further create challenges, I think, um, with our, with our housing situation. So, so this is, this is a kind of a, a conversation that planning and zoning had, and kind of a first step to looking at that.
You know, when we talked last time, I talked to you guys about the time the county sent me down to Aspen, Colorado, and bail, and we toured all those different resorts, and most of those homes were easily over ten thousand square feet, and they all had, uh, part of the home provided housing for the, for the employee to live there and take care of that house. I, I just want to make sure you, that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot here down the road. If somebody wants to come into Valley County and build a ten thousand square foot home, they're not going to be able to do it in the impact area in McCall. And I hope we're not shooting ourselves in the foot, because I think we're going to see more of those kind of folks coming up here.
Yeah, and I, I do think that, you know, our goal would be to have something more like, I mean, Aspen has a housing program that specifically mitigates for those kinds of things, and I think that's probably something we want to look at, too. Um, we're just not ready yet, like, kind of based in Idaho law and everything else, like, all the research that goes into it, we're just not ready to develop that program quite yet, but I think we're getting close.
Well, I know they had some, a lot of it was conditioned on lot size, and, um, what was the other one? There was, there was lot size, you had to provide housing for the employees to maintain that facility, because it's a big building. There was something else. But you could do that, eventually, I think you guys should consider that. I mean, get, make it a separate bullet in your, in your ordinance, that if you want to build a ten thousand square foot home, here's the X amount of conditions that you have to have in order to make that possible. You may need a, a three-acre or a two-acre sized parcel first, you know, and, and start billing on that, because I honestly feel like those folks are coming up here now, and, uh, you're going to, you're going to see it, I hate to see it, but that's, that's what the future shows. And, uh, well, you talk about billing your tax base, that's a fast way to do it.
Hey, um, I have questions on the discriminatory process that this is going to go through. Your legal authority has stated that this is legal to discriminate against people on their housing size?
Our legal team has reviewed these ordinances, and feels that, um, it's lawful to, to put caps, um, on housing, housing sizes. And I, I think, again, the linkage is back to sort of the, the vision statement for the community wanting to be kind of sustainable and affordable, and, and, um, they were comfortable with this cap.
I'm not really comfortable with it, but, I mean, you know, it's the cities-
I'm not comfortable with it in the impact area, because, uh, you say you build a ten or fifteen million dollar home, that's some great value to add to your tax base.
Well, it's not only that, but, I mean, on East Lakeside Drive, you know, I don't know how soon this would become city property, but that impact area is going to continue to grow. And, I mean, it does impact the county in, in a large way, but, I mean, I, I also believe that the city has the right to say what they want to become, and that's their vision statement for that area.
Yep, yep.
That's my feeling as well. I tend to agree that the city has their vision, and, and we really shouldn't be dictating what that vision is. They have their elected officials that are moving through that process.
I'm just talking in the impact-
And I agree, I think the density is kind of a question, too, is like, once you get out of that impact area, then, you know, we can allow larger homes.
You know, is there any bigger homes in, like, this Tamarack?
I think there are three. I looked at a bunch of the homes in Tamarack, and I was looking through our parcel map, and a couple of the homes on the lake, and the largest home on the lake that I found was ten thousand ninety-nine. So, I don't know if they're-
So if Brundage decides they're going to develop some of their ground and build condos and a new lodge and all this stuff, are we gonna, is this going to limit them to ten thousand square homes?
It wouldn't if it's not in the impact area.
I don't, I don't know if it is.
I think the impact area-
It would, yeah, it would not affect anything that Brundage does, um, that would be in Adams County and beyond the impact area.
Well, even on the east side, yeah, I was gonna say-
Even on the east side, yeah.
State ground. I think that it joins the impact area and most of the boundaries around the lake now.
IDL owns all that stuff that's, that's right there between us and Brundage, but... Well, I think you guys have the right to set your own vision. I, I agree with all the local housing situations, but, you know, I hope we're not shooting ourselves in the foot, and I think that there does need to be a further conversation about, you know, what that, what a housing authority could look like, or how you could request something for local housing out of these larger projects, but-
Well, I think that's just it, is they're willing to look at-
I think that's really the vision, is to continue the conversation between the city and the county about how to mitigate impacts of these really big homes, and look towards some of those other communities and the legal frameworks that we have to figure out. Um, sure, we can allow these, but we also have to acknowledge that these homes have an impact on our community, so how are they gonna, you know, um, in, like, what's the, what's the measures for, for mitigation for that impact? And I think, that's where I think there needs to be a little more conversation between the city and the county, and a little bit more research on that issue, kind of like Commissioner Haskins was saying, that some of these other communities actually have, you know, standards in place to allow those bigger structures, and we just don't have that fully developed yet.
Well, and I think it's, you know, it's certainly something that we need to start looking at, Michelle, eventually. Um, the, uh, the big concern really with these great big homes is they're going to have to be on city sewer and water, because I don't think you're going to get a septic permit for a eight or a ten-bedroom home. Maybe in some places, depends on, you know, where they're going to build them, but, um, I think this is the trend, and it's coming.
Go to Tamarack.
I know there was some talk about a pretty big home down here in Round Valley, but I'm not sure where that is right now. I think it was eleven thousand square feet the last I heard, but I don't know where that is. So what do you guys need us to do today?
Um, go ahead.
We're, we're, we're finished with our presentation, like, if anyone-
Um, we have one more thing. Morgan, do you want to, um, bring up the issue that came up with our fire district this morning?
Yeah, so, Michelle and I had a meeting with the fire district this morning, and, um, it's unfortunately pretty late in the game, but they caught, or we caught, one small error. Um, we were adjusting our code, and we presented it to you. We were already changing it, we were changing the language under driveway grade from fifteen percent down to twelve percent, so that's something that Diane presented to you. And as we said, the intent was to bring it in line with fire code. Um, it was just an oversight on our perch, and Garrett from the fire district pointed out this morning that the fire code is not twelve percent grade, it's ten percent grade. So for us to actually be bringing our driveway standards, um, into alignment with the fire district policies, it would be, the change would be from fifteen percent grade on driveway down to ten percent. So that's the only proposed change that I had that I wanted to present. Um, and there is still language in it. Let me see if I can find it, and I can read it to you, um, if you want to follow along. So it's under three point eight, which is six four, C, driveway design. And then it states, you know, the maximum for a permitted shall be, it would be ten percent for a private driveway by the public inside a street, but must include a five percent wide landing to the street with a maximum grade of six percent. So this is all the same, just changing the twelve percent to ten. And then the last line is, upon administrative approval and in consultation with the fire protection district, exceptions may be granted based on topographic constraints. So the fire district, um, wanted to make sure that there was that flexibility in there, that they could approve driveways that were a little bit more steep than ten percent, but on a case-by-case basis, um, if they felt like it would work for them to still be able to provide, you know, life safety measures. That's the only thing I had to add, if you had any question about why we wanted to drop it from, uh, twelve to ten percent.
I, I think that's a wise, wise move. I know we have kind of an unwritten policy at the county that we don't like to take roads over ten percent, because we can't plow them. Um, some of the roads in, uh, Crown Point are more than ten percent, and we have to go in with front-end loaders to get those roads plowed, because a truck and a grader can't do it. And I don't know if you remember last year, but we rolled a, a front-end loader off the side of one of those roads, and, because it's just too steep. So I think that's, that's a good idea, and I would stick with it.
Did the fire department, uh, Morgan, did the fire department have any issues with the, uh, callouts on landscaping and for fire mitigation purposes? Is this-
So we had a meeting specifically on that, and most of our changes reflect comments from the fire district. The draft we're providing today to you, um, has been completely vetted and approved by the fire department. Um, the only thing that we missed under that initial review was the ten and twelve difference.
Perfect.
Okay, so then what we need to do here then is what, to go ahead and approve the update to your ordinances?
Yeah, so, so basically, um, there, the, the ordinance is for the McCall impact area, um, my only suggestion is that you dump the section related to service stations, so that we can have time to figure that out with the city council, and, um, and then bring you back another ordinance on that or not, depending on what comes out of those conversations.
Good.
Right, so it would be adopting either two amendments, the first amendment being the one to remove the section on service stations, and the second would be, um, to adopt the change that I proposed verbally on driveway-
On driveway slope.
Yes, because I, we didn't have that in writing, anywhere. Because we only had the meeting like, two hours ago.
So I'm ready for a motion.
Go ahead. I'll make a motion that we approve the standards of the code amendments for the city of McCall impact area with the two amendments. One would remove the service station language until after the city council makes a decision on it, and the second would be to approve the amended language on the driveway grade.
One second.
Move to second. Any more discussion? So I guess, Michelle, when you guys get the service station thing figured out, you're going to come back to us on that?
Yeah, we, we'll actually come back with a whole new ordinance if we ended up, if we end up changing it. So, it'll be a kind of a whole new public hearing process.
So then, do I need to close the public hearing today, or should I just table it for further?
Um, I think if you're going to go ahead and adopt the ordinance, you can close the public hearing.
Okay. So it's been moved to second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries on the amendments. Is there anything else we need to talk about?
No, just to thank you, and have a nice holiday.
Hey, you too. Thank you very much. So Doug, and this time, I'm going to close the public hearing at one forty-six, and we'll, we can hear back from you on the rest of it.
Great, thanks so much. Happy holidays, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
So is there anything else we need to talk about today? If not, I will adjourn the meeting.